Danovic will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Danovic. Good evening and welcome to the December 1st, 2021 study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,935th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, December 13th, 2021. We have all members of the council with us this evening. Does anyone from the council have any announcements? All right, once again, we'll just wish a happy birthday to our deputy clerk, Lori Miller, and thank her for being here with us this evening. We go to the audience at this time. If anyone in the audience would like to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, we'll proceed with the agenda. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken at this meeting. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions offered may include approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and placed on file for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting agenda of Wednesday, December 13th, 2021, where they will officially be voted upon. If you'd like to participate, any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please approach the podium on either side of the room when the item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. The petitioner, whether that is the city or private entity, will generally make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience wishing to speak. So please come, get close to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium and you're recognized, please state your name and address for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting. It will also let the council and those watching at home know who is speaking to the item. And with that, we begin with new business. Item number one is a request to execute agreement between the City of Livonia and Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation, SMART. This comes as from the Livonia Housing Commission to authorize Livonia Community Transit Program to receive the FTA 5310 Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Grant in the amount of $55,149. Good evening, Ms. Isaacson.
Good evening. I'm just here to request approval to execute this contract with SMART. To be able to receive this grant for $55,149, this funding source will go into our operations budget and fund our Route Match program, which is our transportation routing software.
Madam President.
Vice President Bar.
I'll offer this for consent, approval for consent, if there's no objection.
Thank you. Is that Councilmember Toy?
Yeah, that was the same thing. I'll second it.
All right. Congratulations on the grant, and it's on the consent, so you don't need to come back to see us.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two is a request to approve an increase in compensation for the Director of Human Resources. Comes as from the Department of Civil Service to be in the same compensation range as the other human resources directors in comparable communities. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Council. I'm honored to be here this evening and to have been asked to present on these items tonight. I wasn't initially planning on presenting on items number two or three, mostly because they're not my work. They really are reflective of the hard work and analysis that comes out of our Human Resources Department, but upon invitation, I appreciate the chance to be here. I also recognize that in presenting both of these items tonight, I may be denying Denise Meyer an opportunity here because she's going to be retiring at the end of the year, and this may be her last chance to present tonight. So she is with me, and if you have any further questions after the presentation, she's going to be available to answer them because she really gets into all the technical details. Nonetheless, I am requesting your approval this evening on two salary adjustments, the Human Resources Director and the Director of Administrative Services. There would have been three items to present to you tonight, but the adjustments for the Housing Director's salary structure hasn't yet been reviewed by the Housing Commission, so you can expect that in the future. I recognize that these do appear separately on your agenda tonight, but the impetus for changing them is the same. So I thought I'd start out with a description of how that all came about. Earlier in the year, I had requested that the Director of Human Resources review the department head's salaries citywide to determine if there was any that were really out of line, if there was some unalignment, some misalignment that needed to be repaired, and take a look at that in terms of not only the level of responsibility that each department head has, but take a look at it in terms of, you know, what was the going rate in the marketplace? So the three positions that were identified by the Director of Human Resources was the Human Resources Director position, the Director of Administrative Services, and the Director of Housing. I then asked the Personnel Review Committee to take a look at the findings of the department, and if you're not familiar, the Personnel Review Committee is an internal committee to the city, one established by my predecessors ages ago, and I have to tell you, it is one of the greatest gifts to the city that we have because it is comprised of a number of members of the leadership team led by the Finance Director. And every time there is a salary change, every time there is an approval for a new hire or a replacement, anytime there's a change in job classification, it first goes before the Personnel Review Committee. So there is a level of standardization, there's a level of historic knowledge, all of that comes into play when these decisions are made. So the internal committee was, like I say, established by previous mayors, and they took a look at this recommendation, and they paused for a moment because they wanted to be sure to get the most recent data. We rely heavily on the Conference of Western Wayne's Compensation Survey, and they put that out every two years. So they waited for the 2021 survey information to come out, and then they made their best recommendation to us. So that's what you have before us, before you tonight. So let's take a look at the Human Resources position because that's item number two on your agenda. The Human Resources Director is a vital leadership position in the city. The position demands a wide range of expertise and proficiency in administering hiring practices, in developing and managing our benefits programs, in negotiating as part of our collective bargaining team, in initiating training and coaching opportunities that we have, and handling employee grievances, and a whole, whole lot more. So after an extensive piece of research that the PRC did in comparable salaries in communities that we normally compare ourselves to, we learned that we fell below the average pay for this position. At the starting level, Livonia's salary level averages $4,701, below comparable communities, and then at the maximum pay level, we're about $17,842 below where other communities are, and that's on average. So we believe that this puts us at a competitive disadvantage when we're out hiring for the position, which we happen to be doing right now. So that made this a little bit more critical. So what we're proposing this evening is that the starting salary be changed from $90,417.60 to $98,009.60 with corresponding increases all the way up to step five. There is a rate schedule that's in your packet, and again, all of that math and all of that detail is worked out by some really smart people in the Human Resources Department. Funding for the salary changes would need to be made available by a budget adjustment, but the Finance Director has assured us that funds are available for this request. Our hope had originally been to get this in at the budget discussion period, but the 21 survey wasn't released yet from Conference of Western Wayne, so we didn't have good comparables to provide. So I am going to open it up to questions, and Denise, if you wouldn't mind joining me for your last hurrah perhaps, and a chance to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So I had an opportunity to speak to Ms. Meyer on the phone in regards to both of these changes yesterday, and the first thing I asked her was if this adjustment for her position would be enough to have her stay.
That's a really good question.
She did not hesitate to say absolutely not. But that she would miss us. So I think the thing that I came to find out through my conversation with Ms. Meyer is that the steps that are being created would not necessarily translate from where someone currently is. Like, say, if someone was currently a step five, they would not automatically become a step five under the new system. And that was very enlightening to me. It was helpful in understanding not only the immediate circumstance that we were looking at, but the long-term circumstance as well. Can you provide that information to all of us here as a council? Explain, like, for instance, how that would work from an old step system to a new step system?
Will take me as an example. Currently, I'm at the top step of the Human Resources Director range, which is one, or as of today, actually, 105,476.80. If I were staying and I was going to get the new salary range, I would actually go to, I would not go to step five. I'm at step five currently. According to the compensation plan, which is the city's compensation plan, anytime there's a promotion, a salary range change, or anything like that, an adjustment, the next rate that someone will be paid is approximately 4%. So whichever, so if someone's currently at step five and there's a new range created, then we would look at what is closest in the new range to a 4% increase. So the budget impact would be approximately 4% anytime that happens. So it's not step five to step five.
Okay. So not talking about any specific individual, but a position, since we're looking at two positions, you mentioned your position.
Mm-hmm.
If somebody was at step five for the other position that we're talking about, where would they approximately fall on the new step system?
Okay.
Having topped out in the old step system, where would they be on the new system?
The other position, the other position, step five is 99,528. So a 4% increase for that step would be approximately 103. So we would go to the next closest that's not under 4%. So that would be step one and a half, which would be 104,644.80.
Okay. And I guess my last question would be, just so we all have a consistent understanding of the steps, what dictates somebody moving from step to step? Is that time? Is that performance?
It's time.
Okay. And can you tell us exactly what kind of timeframe?
Yes. It's a little different for an existing employee than it is for new employees because new employees get an automatic step increase after six months, from step one to step one and a half, and then six months later to step two. So within their first year, they go from step one to two. And then every year after that, they get another step, step three, four, and five. If you're promoted, you go to the next step that is closest to 4%, and then after that, you get a step every year until you're at the highest, the highest step.
I should never say last question. Should learn my lesson, but so in terms of determining when that year date would be, how is that determined? Is that based on their hire date, or if they were to, in this circumstance here, if somebody were to start off in step one and a half, as you indicated, would the day that they're promoted to step one and a half then set the annual one-year period?
That's a very good question. That's come up before as well.
I got no answers, but nothing but questions.
Right. That's a very good question. Let me, I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay, just to kind of fully understand.
But I'll be happy to follow up with you on that, to let you know.
Sure. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, if I may, to Ms. Meyer. Ms. Meyer, what other fringes are included in this particular number-two request? They get health, they get dental, they get optical. What other things do they get?
All of the same benefits as all full-time employees.
Does that include a vehicle as well?
That I don't know, because, I don't know, because some, we were talking about that earlier today. For instance, I get a car stipend. Some department heads get a car, so I don't know about this particular position, if it's a stipend or a car, but it's different among the ranks, and I'm not sure what the criteria is for one or the other.
So that's a choice, is what you're saying?
No. I was told when I was hired I would get a car allowance.
Allowance, okay.
A stipend, right. So it's not a choice.
And you were hired under, right, Dennis?
Mayor Kirksey.
Oh, you were? Okay. Okay. All righty. Anything else you can think of this position yet as well, when we're comparing city to city?
Well, we didn't compare benefits.
Oh, we didn't?
First, right. When we went for the salary survey, it was strictly based salaries.
In a salary, though, do we not think of fringes as part of that salary?
No.
Or compensation in any way? We don't?
We do not.
Hmm, that's interesting. Okay.
Well, the Conference of Western Wayne Salary Survey is strictly based salaries.
Well.
They don't include the.
Good for them.
Well, and the other.
Yeah. Great. All right. Yeah, okay. All right. I just, I just want to be sure we're on even ground because I've been here long enough where I've seen where we go up, and then I've seen where we got to come down. You know what I mean? And I want to make sure that we're on even ground as we do this because I want to be fair to that employee as well as fair, you know, as we dole out this type of, these types of dollars.
And I will reiterate that the Finance Director took a very careful look. Him and I worked very closely together on this, and he was, he was very satisfied with everything that we, that we are recommending this evening.
Okay. Well, we're the check and balance to that, so.
Of course.
You know that. And that, and, you know, we have to ask these questions.
Of course.
At least I do, so that when people ask me, at least I can come back with, why did somebody get this X amount of kind of situation? So just to be clear on that, that's all. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Meyer. Looking over all the survey around the neighboring communities, did you, I guess just more detail on how you guys came up with the new minimum of 98, because I'm looking through a lot of the corresponding communities, and I know Ann Arbor is obviously, you know, starting at 117, max of 152, but it seems like a lot of the communities around do start right around our current step one. You know, I look at this, and obviously reinventing the salary schedule is very imperative. We have to make sure that we're a destination and bringing in the best. I totally agree with that. It's just, you know, that was the only thing that really stuck out of, just even worthy of a question.
Well, the starting pay is very similar, but if you look at the maximum salary, we're the lowest.
Yes.
So, and that's what people look at when they're, when they're considering a move.
Now, the question is, and maybe this was answered, I'm not sure, if it's an external candidate that gets hired, do they automatically start at a step one, or is that part of the negotiation process?
That's not part of the negotiation process. However, the comp plan does allow additional steps, but up to a max, up to a max of step three.
Okay. So step three is going to be, if all of a sudden you guys get someone that is just phenomenal, and this is what they want, gives you a little negotiating power.
Exactly.
And that's fine. That was the only thing, like I said, I do think that these are needed for the increase. I do think that the minimum, or the maximum is low. I think, you know, it might have been better to look at a little higher, but the low, I'm not going to fight over it. I think it's a great, you know, step, and I'll be in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. Have, do we have an approving yet, or a denying or anything? No? I'll ask for an approving on number two.
I can say.
Yeah, I'm the regular, just in case somebody has another question and gets information.
Okay. So that'll be on the regular, I'm sorry, Vice President Bar.
No apology needed. Just from my education, Denise, it appears, looking at these two positions, and I know we'll be handling the other one separately, but that there's a fairly consistent percentage increase among the steps. Is that, this is just from my own curiosity, is that the case across all of our director positions? I see they're pretty similar between these two, but would I see a similar percent step up from step one through five on the other director position?
That is consistent through all, all the positions within the city. Every step increase is approximately 4%.
So, okay, because I appreciate Councilman McCullough's insight about looking at the means. I actually hadn't noticed that, but that at least provides some explanation as to where that comes from, so.
Right.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome. All right. Anyone else? So that's approving on the regular agenda. Thank you very much, Denise. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, stand by. Or ask for it to be a regular.
Did you want to move to the next item?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you'd introduced it yet.
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you, you had really introduced it, but I'll introduce it formally. This is a request to approve increase in compensation for the Director of Administrative Services and change in title from the Department of Civil Service to align with current salaries of department heads with similar responsibilities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the same process was used to determine the salary range that we just saw for the Director of Human Resources, to determine the salary range for the Director of Administrative Services with one exception. By the time it got to the Personnel Review Committee, one of the members of that committee happens to be the Director of Administrative Services, so they remove themselves from the process, rightly so. So additionally, we are asking that the title be changed to Chief of Staff, just to more clearly reflect the work that's being performed in that position and reflect a title that's more commonly used in government. It helps people find, you know, where to go to get answers quicker. The Director of Administrative Services, Chief of Staff position, it's a vital leadership position in the city. It demands a comprehensive knowledge of the overall function of the city. The Director is responsible for working with the mayor to lead and implement various strategic planning processes across the leadership team structure. We spend an awful lot of time these days talking about that structure and the importance of breaking down the silos of government, and the Chief of Staff is largely responsible for making sure that there is communication among departments in an effort to break down those silos and afford us a more expeditious way to do business. They're also responsible for providing the leadership team with important information so that it facilitates a more efficient decision-making process. They bring about more collaboration with the leadership team, help to determine the priorities for projects. We've got a lot of plates spinning at the same time, and so oftentimes, the deputy, or not deputy, but the Chief of Staff helps to make sure the department heads know which of those plates needs to come in for a landing now because we're on a deadline. There's also a lot of work that goes into determining performance measures. The Chief of Staff works with me a great deal in determining what the annual goals are for each one of our departments, what the measurements are for success, and whether or not those measurements are met. They are amazingly important person in the organization, in addition to all of that, managing a support staff within the executive office. So after an extensive examination of the Director of Administrative Services position and their salary levels, looking at different department heads within our own structure, and then also looking at department heads at that same level in other communities that we often compare ourselves to, at the starting level, we find ourselves averaging $21,167.67 below comparable communities, while at the maximum, Livonia's pay is $36,103.67 on average lower. Again, putting us at a competitive disadvantage when we're looking to hire somebody in that position. So we are proposing that the starting salary be changed from $85,134 to $102,585.60 with corresponding increases up to step five, and the wage rate schedule, again, is in your packet. So if you've had a chance to take a look at that, that's all available. And again, if you have questions, Denise is here to help us understand all of the components.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. Help me understand this for now and in the future. When we, when we change that job title to Chief of Staff, would there, is there any kind of requirement for any kind of education? Is this a political appointment, so to speak, then, or is this a civil service kind of thing? I'm not sure, and I broke my computer, so you'll have to, you'll have to bear with me because Jim doesn't share, and I'm just joking around. Okay. So those are the two questions I have from, just from the glare at it.
Nothing else changes, and this would not be required to go through the commission because it's not a civil service commission position, it's an appointed position. But as far as, I'm not sure what you mean by education.
Well, you know, people graduate with master's degree in public administration, and, you know. We have some excellent facilities around the area where a lot of folks, I know in Lansing there's many Chief of Staffs, and they don't require it, as is being proposed here.
Right.
It is a political appointment. That's why I asked. I just wanted to see where we're at with that kind of thing.
Right. It is a mayoral, it's an appointee, a mayoral appointee.
Yes. Okay, so it's strictly appointees.
It already is.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And we're, we're pretty low, it looks like, then and then, okay?
Exactly.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Dan.
Thanks, Madam President. Councilman Toy essentially asked my question, was this position already protected by civil service, or was it an appointed political position that any mayor can bring in whoever that mayor wants?
That's correct. It's an appointed position.
Thank you for answering that question, asking that question. Councilman Toy.
Sure.
I take Brandon, and then Jim, and then Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Ms. Meyer. Out of these, and I think if I'm looking at the comparisons, it's kind of a tough one because you want to keep apples to apples rather than apples to oranges, and I know that there are certain ICMA communities that have a city manager run city, and then obviously have the strong mayor component. I know out of the list, Novi is an ICMA, Farmington Hills, I believe, is an ICMA. The only one on here, I believe, is Sterling Heights, that would be a strong mayor position.
Dearborn.
Just to give, and then what other, and Dearborn. So I mean, obviously, that goes into, you know, if you're looking through the ICMA salary survey, I guess any way you look at it, from both vantage points of a strong mayor or an ICMA, if this was an assistant city manager, chief of staff, whatever you would cut it down to, in charge of administration, to me, I was very surprised and taken back on how low it really was compared to neighboring communities of size and the responsibility. I mean, you have an administrative director that is getting probably played less than half of the colleagues at a director level. Obviously, then you throw the mayoral appointment there, yeah, it becomes interesting. But yeah, out of this, the only two, if I write, is Dearborn, Sterling Heights, and then was there any other ones on this list that, I know Warren would be a strong mayor position, you don't know what they're making, do you?
We did reach out to all of those communities, but we did not get a response.
Okay.
From Dearborn, they were, they were going through transition, and Sterling Heights did not respond, so that's why they're on your, on your chart, but there's no response from them.
Okay. I'll offer an approving for regular.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll, just for the record, just to point it out, although this is a mayoral appointment, the person who's been in this role has been there for at least 10, probably 15, if not more, years, and has provided an amount of consistency through various different mayoral administrations. And in considering this, I know we're not considering the person specifically, but we do have a track record of it not being a political appointment, per se, in the traditional sense where there has been a consistency and appreciation for people from administration to administration keeping the role. So I, I just think that's worth pointing out.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Bar.
Denise, when did we last, again, just for informational purposes, when did we last increase the salary for this position? Do you know? If you don't, that's fine, I didn't ask you this at a time.
Overall, or according to just any increase?
Just the pay scale. The pay scale for this position.
Oh, the pay scale?
Have we, or has it been this way?
I've been here seven years, we haven't looked at these pay scales.
Okay.
Any of these three.
And that, okay, and like I said, just a point of interest, and I just, going off what Councilman Jolly said, I mean, that's actually something that I've appreciated for the city a long time across all of our director positions, is that we've had a lot of consistency there, and I, I think it's, it's part of what makes our government run so smoothly, that we don't have this wholesale changeover every time a new mayor comes in. I definitely understand the rationale for asking for this. However, I am going to offer this, I'm going to offer a resolution for committee of the whole, and I'll tell you why. Because there's been significant changes in that office over the last few years, last couple of years, and I wasn't necessarily interested in having this conversation now, but I don't really feel comfortable talking about this position until we look comprehensively at that office as a whole. I don't want to get into a ton of detail tonight because we're dealing with names and people, and just on a personal level, people are friends of mine, but, but the fact of the matter is, we essentially have three directors in that office, in a place where we used to have one.
place where we used to have one. And I know that some are, they're in different departments, but if you actually look at the work that's being done and how it's been organized, it's structured very differently than what it used to be. And so, while I'm open to the rationale on this, I don't think it's a good idea to be talking about this level of increase with this position without looking at that, without looking at that office as a whole and what makes sense. So, I'm going to offer this for committee, so we can have that discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? All right. Councilmember Danovic.
I do have a question. It's on topic, but a little off topic. Are we, are we as a city increasing wages for entry-level employees or employees that aren't department heads at the same rate that we are our department heads? Is there a consistent level there of increases for employees at the, you know, the very base level, all the way up to the department head?
We are consistently reviewing different positions and their classifications and their salary ranges. But we don't have the resources to do a comprehensive salary study to make those sweeping changes. So, you will be seeing more of this coming forward. I will let you know that everyone got their, the December first increase today, obviously. So, everybody's pay is going up, and they all know that. But as far as looking at ranges, making sure that they're still comparable, many of our entry-level positions are above our comparables. But we are consistently taking pieces of the workforce to make sure that we're not seeing this type of debt, you know. What am I trying, I can't think of the word. What is it?
Disparity.
Yes, thank you. Disparity. So, we are looking at all of our positions. We've been before you numerous times already for different salary ranges and changes and title changes and so on and so forth, and we're not finished yet. Councilmember Bertoey.
Thank you. I just want to say, like you said, in seven years, as we look at, and I'm not only talking department heads, I think, you know, the employees as a whole in this city have done a fabulous job, and we've recognized them in other ways, both, you know, telling them how proud we are of them and in handling in these uncertain times and circumstances. So, I'm just happy to know I serve in a city that has money to spend, and especially when it comes to our employees. I think that's so critical, as others have pointed out, in a well-run city with good backgrounds, good educational components, and just good minds and cooperation that we have here. And you know that probably much better than I, Denise, because you've run that department for seven years, and you've heard the good, the bad, and the ugly, I'm sure. And I don't mean to be rude, I just mean, you know, it can be a challenge. I've worked in other communities that don't have that kind of cooperation, and it can get real nasty. So, you know, I applaud everyone for, and I'm not only talking directors here, I'm talking about the overall umbrella here, that I think we've done a good service to our employees. Maybe some would disagree with me, but that's okay, that's a business we're in up here. But honestly, thank you for your service and the recommendations you've come forward with as well. Appreciate. Hopefully, we get somebody just as qualified and going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, so we have an approving offered and a committee of the whole offered. So, we'll see you in December thirteenth. All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all.
Very much appreciate your being here tonight.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four is a request for authorization to purchase two John Deere Gators with utility attachments through the State of Michigan bid process. This comes from the Department of Public Works to replace units that have exceeded their life expectancy from budgeted funds.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director, Public Works. Yeah, this item before you is for the purchase of two units that are being purchased through the State of Michigan bid, pricing which reflects about a 12% discount versus the list price. The servicing dealer for this would be Hudson, Inc. out of South Lyon. These units are used to move personnel, material, and tools. In the summer months, they aid in all aspects of parks and athletic field maintenance. And in the wintertime, they're also outfitted with V plows for snow removal and rear spreaders to spread salt on sidewalks. One of those units will be stationed full-time here at the Civic Center. The second will be stationed at Greenmead in the summer, and then we brought over to Civic Center for use in the wintertime. These units will also replace two like pieces of equipment that were purchased back in 2014. Those pieces are well-worn, and the repair costs are exceeding their current overall value, so those pieces will be auctioned off for disposal. So, with that, the department is asking council, recommending council to approve the purchase of these two units at a total cost of sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety cents.
Madam President.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to offer an approving for consent. Thank you.
Any comments? Anyone from the audience will place that onto consent. All right. Number five is a request for authorization to purchase one John Deere tractor through the State of Michigan bid process. This comes from the Department of Public Works to replace a unit that has exceeded its life expectancy from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow.
Thank you again. Yes, this piece of equipment would also be purchased through the state contract pricing between the State of Michigan and John Deere. This would be used in the Parks Maintenance Section for towing, mowing decks, ball-diamond maintenance, and sidewalks, snow removal. This is not an increase in the fleet, it's a replacement of a tractor that was purchased back in 2008. And that will be also disposable through the auction process. We do have, in the fleet, three other units that are similar to this one, that are used for similar purposes. These tractors can also be shared with the golf courses when needed, and the tractor will have loader attachments, heated cab, air plow, snow plow, snow broom, also for snow removal. The cost of the loader in total is seventy-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents, and we're requesting that amount for purchase.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember White. I'll offer approving and consent, if there's no objection.
I see no objections. Anyone from the audience seeing none, will place it on the consent. Mr. Rushlow. Item number seven. This is a request for authorization to purchase two John Deere Flexwing grooming mowers, FM-1015R, through the State of Michigan bid process. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works to replace units that have exceeded their life expectancy from budgeted funds.
With all due respect, I think you skipped number six, which is a similar item.
I'm sorry. That was one John Deere. Six is request for authorization to purchase one John Deere utility tractor through the State of Michigan bid process. This two comes from the Department of Public Works to replace a unit that has exceeded its life expectancy from budgeted funds. And this is a utility tractor, not Flexwing grooming mowers.
Correct. Yeah, so this utility tractor is similar to item five, but it's a smaller unit. These are used for slightly different purposes. So, these are used for ball-diamond maintenance, mowing material around properties, operating attachments such as rototillers and fertilizer spreaders are used on these smaller tractors. They'll also have a small factory-installed bucket for use as well. This unit is replacing one that was purchased back in 2010, that again is exceeding its value for replacement and repairs. Disposal of that unit will also be done through the auction process. And this is being purchased, again, through the state contract pricing, reflecting a nice discount from the retail list price. So, with that, the department is asking council to approve the purchase of this John Deere tractor at an amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Councilmember Toy.
I'll move that, Madam Chair, for consent, if that's okay with everyone.
All right. Any objections? Seeing none. Item number seven, request for authorization to purchase two John Deere Flexwing grooming mowers, FM-1015, through the State of Michigan bid process. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works to replace units that have exceeded their life expectancy from budgeted funds.
Thank you once again. These two Flexwings are also being purchased through the state contract pricing with John Deere, that again offers a nice discount from the retail list price. Servicing dealer, once again, for John Deere is through Hudson out of South Lyon. These units are pull-behind Flexwings, they are fifteen feet wide. They're used to mow some of the larger open areas in the parks. Each of them has three decks that fold up and can be moved from site to site as needed with three blades on each deck. Units are towed, like I said, tow behind the bigger tractors in the Parks Department. There are two similar units that are being replaced, that were purchased back in 2012. Those will look to be auctioned off and for disposal as well through that process. One of these units will be placed at Bicentennial Park. The other will be placed at the DPW yard, stationed out of the DPW yard, and then brought to locations where needed, typically on the south end of town. So, with that, the department is asking council to approve the purchase of these two wing mowers at a total cost of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Madam President.
Councilmember Jolly.
So, I'll offer an approving for consent. And with this item and the previous three, I can't help but think that our DPW team should be wearing green John Deere tractor hats.
No kidding.
And with all the work that we, as a city, are giving this supplier, I don't know, maybe they'll throw in some of those with the delivery of these products, eh? But these are standard purchases, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight is request for authorization to purchase two twenty-two-foot SureTrak heavy equipment landscape trailers. These two comes to us from the Department of Public Works from budgeted funds.
Thank you. This one's a little different than the previous four we just went through in the fact that it was done through an open bid process. So, this was placed for bid on mitten. The bid opening was November ninth of 2021. There was actually only one response for the purchase of these trailers. These will be used by the Park Maintenance Section, but are typically shared through other departments in DPW as needed for towing equipment. They're used to haul equipment, you know, like wide mowers, zero-turn mowers, handheld equipment, fuel tanks, things like that, out to athletic fields. They're used to move tractors as well and other equipment, like fertilizer spreaders, grass seeders, mower decks, from site to site as needed in the Parks Department. The trailers are used pretty much from, every day from April to November by the Parks Department for their regular routine maintenance-type activities. These are long trailers, they're twenty-two feet long, solid oak decking, removable sides for transported materials, and a wench to help load and to hold material in place once loaded. We do have two similar trailers that were purchased quite a while ago in the mid-'90s. Those have been repaired and components replaced multiple times on those units. Their repairs have gotten to the point where they are beyond further repair or replacement of components and just need to be scrapped, which we will, well, scrapped is not the right word, disposed of through the auction process, but are no longer used to us. So, with that, the department is asking council to approve the purchase of these two trailers in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for both trailers.
Madam President.
Councilmember Danovic.
I'll offer an approving and place that on consent, if there's no objection.
All right, no objections, we'll place that on consent. Item number nine, award a bid. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works, building maintenance for professional architecture services for the Silver Village roof replacement from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow.
Thank you. So, just a little background on what's going on here with Silver Village apartments. The existing FS Fultick shingle roof systems at the apartments and the community center in the apartment complex are well past their serviceable life and are in need of replacement. The proposed project scope includes replacement of the existing shingles, along with any saturated roof decking underneath, proper flashing details, perforated soffits installed, and ancillary system components that are needed to achieve a complete watertight roof assembly for these buildings. In order to proceed with the design and bidding of the project, we sent out a request for proposals and issued that to our four as-needed architecture firms in accordance with that QBS contract that was approved back in 2020 for those services. HRC was the lowest bidder in that response to the proposal that was put out for this work. With that, it's our recommendation that council proceed to award this professional service project to, through the QBS process, for design through, or, excuse me, to HRC for the Silver Village apartment roof replacement in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars from budgeted funds.
Madam President.
Councilmember Jolly.
So, we're all familiar with Silver Village, and why exactly are architectural services needed to replace these roofs? I mean, the roofs, from a layperson's perspective, are not all that dissimilar from other structures that would just normally be replaced through a contractor. Why, who made the decision, and what was the logic?
Sure.
For pursuing architectural services to get us to that point?
Yeah, so, one of the things that we had done early in 2020 was we started to identify when we brought on our architects on these as-needed contracts through the QBS process. We have four architecture firms that we now work with. So, when we look at our capital building projects for each year now, we're bringing those architects on board to help us do the first step in the process, which is scope development. So, we know we have a problem on a project like this with Silver Village. What do we need to do in order to make this project a success? Get together proper plans and specifications to then put out bid documents for contractors to respond to, and where they're comparing, we are able to then compare and analyze their bids on an apples-to-apples comparison. What we found in the past, especially on a project to this magnitude, which the construction estimate right now for this one is right around a million dollars. So, on larger projects like that, we want to make sure that we have proper details from the architects, not just for replacing shingles, but also, like I mentioned, the, you know, the underlayment, the roof decking, the soffits, flashing details, making sure that all those are done the way they should be for those different roof systems on each building, plus the community center, so that when we get those responses back to the bids that are received, we have a good comparison, and the contractors all understand exactly what needs to be done, and we can hold them to standards that we need to for these replacements.
Councilmember Danovic, and then Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. So, to Mr. Jolly's point and to your answer, are you saying that essentially the contractual services of the architect, they're basically going to be acting as a GC on the job to make sure that the job is done correctly?
They are.
They're going to be consulting on the job, making sure everything's done to the professional standards?
Excuse me. So, I would not categorize it as a GC. What their role is, is to look at the scope that was prepared, meet with us, prepare a design for a bid package. So, it will have design plans, as well as details and specifications, and a list of required submittals and material samples and everything that are going to be provided by the contractors for this project. So, they're doing all that designing, all the specifications writing in the front end and using our City of Livonia front-end legal contract document language for the contractor to proceed with the project. So, their role, their architect's role, is the design process. And then when it gets into construction, they will be assisting us with the administration of that contract, which their role would be reviewing shop drawings that are submitted to make sure that what the contractor thinks we want them to provide as far as flashing details. They're providing us with a material that's going to meet what was in the specification. The architect looks at that, reviews it to make sure it matches that, and then also verifies in the field during construction that what their building does in fact match the approved shop drawings that were submitted and meets the design intent, so that we're getting the product that we should be getting. So, their role is twofold, it's design and then also assistance on construction administration.
So, those services cost roughly twenty-five thousand dollars before any work is ever actually done.
For this project, the, let's see, the breakdown was thirteen thousand and some change for design services and bidding services, and then the construction phase, which is the contract administration, was just over eight thousand dollars for that phase.
Thank you, Mr. Rushlow.
Anyone else? Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President.
I do want to almost applaud this preventative measure when you go into a project like this. As you've seen, the project dollars being close to a million dollars. When we would get into a project of that magnitude, if the project's not scoped properly, the change requests could be far exceeding the $20,000 that would go into it. So by doing this nature of prepping, and then I'm assuming with the with the with the process that we have in place, if we do do the construction services after the administration is what, probably a percentage of the total project, I think it's like 6% or 5%. That's based on after the RFP and the contractor selected. But by doing so, this front-end work, it might seem like a lot, but when you're looking at a million-dollar project, it's the right scope. And just like Mr. Rushlow was saying, that, you know, there's a lot that goes, I know it looks just like a roof, but you have energy codes that are out there and insulation and all that kind of jazz, and it's better to get the right scope. So if there's no objections, I'll put this approving on consent.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. Mr. Rushlow, if I may, Madam President. When we look at these roofs, I I own a building and we have the flat tire roof, which is a real pain. I'd like to, you know, put something better on it, but the cost is outrageous. Do these folks come in and maybe suggest that to us? You know, I mean, will they say, you might not want to do a tire roof because, you know, you use these buildings a lot, blah, 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 whatever? I mean, is that part of their role as well?
Yeah, that's a great, great question. So we did that process before this phase where they were entering now, which is design. So that was in what we call the scope development phase where we, through that QBS process with our four architecture firms, we we went through all these different projects and we assigned, like DLZ is the architect that did the scope development with us, where they met with us, the building department, the housing commission, and went out to the sites, looked at everything, assessed the conditions, put together a scope that, you know, that what they thought was needed, what needed to be replaced. And then that's what was put in our RFP that we sent out. Again, to those same four firms and said, okay, here's the scope, here's what we know needs to be done. Now, how much is it going to cost us to, you know, what do you think is a construction cost estimate for all this? And then how much would it cost, you know, in your proposal response to us for you as a firm to do the design and construction work or construction administration for us?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam.
Anyone else? All right. We've got that on consent. Thank you very much. Moving right along, item number 10, request to amend the engineering contract with OHM Advisors. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works for as-needed professional engineering services in an amount not to exceed $350,000 annually. Mr. Rushlow.
Yes, thank you once again. And I believe this is my last item for the evening, so. Thanks for bearing with me on all those those last few. So on this item, through the QBS contract that we have with our engineering firms, OHM Advisors has assisted the city for a number of years on developing our advanced hydraulic modeling system for the management of the city's water distribution network and sanitary sewer collection system. OHM continues to provide that service to us through the in the DPW, using highly technical expertise that they have to help run and analyze those hydraulic models for the city. Through recent years, both the water and sewer section of the DPW, as well as the engineering division, have both been required to increase our reliance on those specialized services that OHM performs for water for water modeling analyses and related engineering tasks. These services have really been crucial for our department when analyzing pressures, flows, and capacity for new connections by proposed developments, as well as planning our own and performing our own system valve replacement program, valve exercising, the pressure-reducing valve replacements that we've come before you and spoke about before. All those things combined all rely on those services through hydraulic modeling, as well as a current project we're working on, which is analyzing our source connections from the Great Lakes Water Authority and looking at connection outage scenarios, emergency response scenarios, and how to prepare for those scenarios using the modeling software. On top of that, OHM has been assisting us with also utilizing GIS, geographic information services, combined with water modeling information to develop a very robust emergency response plan, as well as what's been new regulatory requirements from the state of Michigan through the revised lead and copper rule for tracking inventorying known and believed to be known lead pipe services throughout the city's water system. Those highly specialized services that I just mentioned are very technical disciplines that don't fall into completely into any one of the categories that are listed through the QBS contracts. And based on on that fact, back in 2019, we first came in front of the council and asked for these as-needed, an as-needed contract amendment with OHM to perform those services. Now that we have a new QBS contract in process here that was approved recently, we're asking again for a five-year agreement with OHM for these as-needed specialized services that would go through the length of the QBS contract, which is November 30th of 2026. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice President Burr.
Thanks for that explanation or that those details, Jacob. So you've mentioned in 2019 that we signed this contract for not to exceed budget of $350,000. Was that was that annually or was that total?
That was total.
That was total. How much of that have we used since that time?
So over the previous three years, we used just about $234,000 of that $350,000.
So and was that for similar type of work for what we're talking about now? So can you help me understand, and what we're asking for here is $350,000 annually for the next five years. We're talking about 1.7 million-ish, I guess 1.75 million, I think. Sorry, quick math, maybe I'm wrong, but somewhere around 350,000 annually, whereas we've spent 234,000 over the last two years, three years. Can you help me understand the reason? That's a huge increase in the not-to-exceed amount.
It is an increase. And I guess one thing I'll mention is, so with the as-needed services, which is different indifference from our QBS contract, it's a it's an hourly not-to-exceed number. We don't we don't intend to hit that number. I don't think we're going to expend all $350,000 on an annual basis. We'll probably be somewhere in the 100, 150,000 range, which is kind of, you know, where we've been a little under 100,000 a year here. But we want to make sure that we have, when the when the situations do arise, that we have the ability to call on our expertise at with our consultants to assist us when needed on those types of projects.
Is there a reason to expect that the amount of work we're going to need? I understand you're playing conservative, but is there a reason to expect that the amount of work we're going to need is that much higher?
Yeah, I mean, so the one the one big thing that I mentioned just a few minutes ago had to do with that emergency response scenario planning, which is, I think, is a big part of what we need to do more of here. And we've been planning for this over the last few years, but getting to the point where we have a very robust, well-planned-out emergency response plan, so that when when we do run into an emergency situation, because it will happen again at some point, you know, we just saw one with Great Lakes Water Authority where a few communities lost their source water just recently. We want to be prepared to have those plans in place. And we're using OHM to run those scenarios for us through that hydraulic modeling software to help us understand the system and run many, many different scenarios to realize, okay, if we lose pressure here or connection here, how do we reroute water to make sure that we're not completely losing water in one portion of the city or having low pressure? So we do anticipate an increase in the need for the hydraulic modeling services. I also mentioned the regulatory requirements from the state of Michigan with lead and copper rule. That is a, I'll call it a burdensome task that's being handed down to us from the state to inventory the lead service lines. And OHM is has some really good tracking methods that they're starting to use and bringing asset GIS in along with the other modeling softwares that they have to try and locate and help us track where we have those lead service lines, so we're not running around digging up locations to inventory things that, you know, might not need to be. So we do anticipate there's a there's going to be a larger need there as well in compliance with the new lead and copper rule.
So when you when you and thanks for that, if when you talk about planning for emergency situations, let's take something like what we talked about in the last meeting with where you guys are coming to us afterwards to pay something they had to do in an emergency situation. Is that the type of thing that this would enable us to cover? It would avoid you having to come?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Just because the that all, I appreciate that explanation. I guess I'm just looking at the fact that if you take what we've spent over the last three years, which isn't a small sample size, if you were to prorate that over five years, that'd be 390,000 total over five years. We're now asking for 350,000 annually over five years. That's that's really big. And I look, I have tremendous respect for OHM, know they do great work for us and have a lot of trust in everybody involved here. But even in people I trust, I struggle with writing blank checks. I just seem it seems to me we could still be doing proper planning here and not be doing. I guess I'd prefer to err on the side of going lower and you guys having to come back and say, hey, we messed up. And I guess that would be a lesson learned. But just based on the lesson of the last three years, this just seems really high. And and I struggle to approve this at this amount. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And like you said, you know, and
I'm not in the game like you are, so.
Your earlier comment is we are being, you know, overly conservative with making sure that our not-to-exceed number is not something we're going to be coming back in front of you multiple times, saying, hey, we have this other, you know, scenario, we need to increase it as needed again, we need to increase it as needed again over that five-year period. So certainly, we are being a little overly conservative with that number. If there's a desire, a more comfort level to lower that on an annual basis, I'm also comfortable with that.
You threw out the number earlier, and I know this is anything official, but you said, you know, we we anticipate this might be in the hundreds. I think I heard you say that. I'm inclined to say, let's do this, but let's do it 200 annually instead of 350. I think that still gives you a, just based on what I've heard you say, I think that's still a relatively conservative approach, but not the jump from the last three years that we've seen here. I give you the chance to tell me why you think that's nuts.
No, I I could certainly live with that number and we'll we'll make that work. And if there is a situation where, you know, we have to come back again, then, you know, we're back in front of you guys asking. Not a not a big deal to us. We can certainly do that. I'd be happy to.
And perhaps perhaps I'm totally wrong, and you guys will have to come and say, hey, I told you so, and I'll be the first to admit it, okay? But I'm going to offer an resolution that we do this for 200 annually, not 350. And thanks for your transparency tonight, Jacob.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So not specifically in regards to this project and the numbers that we're talking about here, but to be quite frank with you, I don't like these large not-to-exceed numbers that are shooting potentially high for the fact that it may be easier and avoid future council meetings. We're here at least twice a month, no matter what, and we'd love to see you or any of your friends from DPW. I mean, to be quite honest, I mean, like, listen, I mean, that that doesn't really provide a whole lot of benefit for us. And to be honest with you, it erodes our oversight of these projects. So I mean, I just, I I know your sentiment was meant and the effort is meant to be a positive and an efficiency, right? But at the same time, I don't know that the efficiency or the benefit outweighs the responsibility that we have and the pleasure we get in seeing you and your friends, right? So, thank you.
Yep. No, I can certainly appreciate that. And I think, you know, with the with the comment about not needing to come back, it's it's not so much the burden of coming back, it's the timeliness of the response that sometimes we need. We're two weeks and getting a new scenario run on a model to figure out an emergency situation just won't won't be adequate, right? So we need, we do need that flexibility in there to to have those consultants ready to go when we need them in that type of a situation. So I guess that was more my my comment on not having to come back very often was just just for that need of, and that's why we have an as-needed service contract, right? It's it's for smaller tasks that we need to have done quickly that over the span of a year or five years are going to amass to a larger sum overall, but.
Right. But, you know, say if, as Mr. Barr said, you put it at $200,000 and you notice that you are approaching that limit, come back to us preemptively and ask to increase it in in the interim as opposed to having a blanket upfront. And again, it's not specifically in regards to this project, but these projects in general, right? Like, I think sometimes these broad numbers are, they're a little tough to swallow, right?
Vice President Burr.
Thanks for your patience, Councilman Donavick. Just one more tack-on comment. I do want to acknowledge, first of all, even at 200, it's it's a significant increase for what we've done before. So I I don't know, maybe I'm even, I maybe could cut deeper, but I'll stick with that. But I do want to compliment you because the fact that you've spent 234 of the 350 before, if you were routinely coming to us and I asked you that question and you had spent up to that not-to-exceed amount, that would definitely lift my suspicion as to, okay, you know, are we incentivizing the wrong thing here? The fact that you're not spending that builds trust in the fact that you guys are continuing to be responsible with that. So I just want to compliment you on that and certainly, you know, plan to keep an eye on that in the future again. I don't want that to go unacknowledged. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Rushlow, and to Mr. Jolly's comment, in the need to be able to act quickly in the event of a scenario, and if you don't have the available funds, do we get charged some sort of emergency fee or something along those lines because OHM had to come and do their services quicker or?
No. So our contract does not have that type of language in it for emergency services. It's really, so for us, it's it's this kind, this as-needed contract that allows us to have our team at OHM, you know, basically at our fingertips or at a phone call to assist us when we need in an emergency situation. The existing QBS contracts are, you know, if you recall, on those contracts, the way they're set up, whenever we have a project, we we have them prepare a scope, a schedule, and a budget, and we come back to the council and we do a contract amendment. So that existing QBS contract will have many supplements to it for every single project that lists out what's being done, by who, what's the schedule, what's the budget and all that. This as-needed contract gives us that flexibility to have OHM there to assist us in emergency situations, as well as, you know, numerous other tasks that were discussed earlier.
All right. That's on.
I'd offer that for consent if there's no objection.
All right. Are we, Paul, we can do that, right? I can say even if the amount's changed.
As long as that's what the the resolution is, we can make a change.
Okay. All right. Any objections? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Jacob. We appreciate it. What?
It was 200.
200. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Number item number 11 is the resignation of Scott Morgan from the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective immediately. We received a letter from Mr. Morgan. Do we do we have, we have to, we don't have to take any action on that, correct? It's just an announcement that he's resigned.
Pretty much just an announcement that he's resigned.
Or receiving fine.
I don't think you can deny it. Let's have some fun with him, right?
I was thinking about that as I asked the question.
But if you put it on a regular, he has to come back.
All right. Following that is appointment number 12, the appointment of Tamara Oliverio to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from Councilmember Kathy White to begin upon the resignation of Mr. Morgan. That's tonight, in order to fill his unexpired term, which expires July 12, 2024. And we'll go to Councilmember White.
I think most of you know Tamara. She's been active in the community for quite some time. Her resume shows that she's been involved in PTSD, PTSD.
That comes after the term.
Yeah, that's after a few meetings.
You can tell it's been a long night. PTSA Livonia Junior Athletic League, the Downtown Livonia Partnership. She has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University and wants to become more involved in the city by serving on the ZBA. So hopefully, there's sentiment here to approve.
Madam President.
Yes.
So I think it is fitting that I can distinctly recall sometime in the summer of 2015, four of us were well on our way of this council journey. And I think that's when most of us probably met you and were getting to know each other. And I distinctly remember you on the stairs of the city hall out here for the Downtown Livonia Partnership. So I think it's absolutely fitting at this point that Councilmember White, in one of her final in one of her final acts on council, will be kind of closing the circle in many ways by appointing you to the Z B A. Good luck, I'll offer an approval for consent.
Thank you.
I'm sure you will do great.
Councilmember, Vice President Burr.
And Tamara, we'll give you a chance to speak here in a minute, but I just, I want to lend my support for it. I'm, I'm thrilled that you're willing to step up and take this position since, I mean, I think the first time I met you was the day that Mr. Jolly's, the day to which he's referring. And, and I didn't know you well then, and, and even didn't know you well afterwards, but over the last few years have been formally gotten to know you better and, and really appreciate the, the insight that you bring and the passion you bring to our city. And when I heard that you were interested in stepping into this role, I just thought it was a tremendous fit. So really appreciate stepping up. People, people don't fully appreciate, you maybe don't yet fully appreciate the, the level of commitment for something like this, but it's so essential for our city to run and to have an intellect and just the level of insight that you bring to that will be an asset to that board, so, thanks.
Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. I've had the pleasure to talk to you multiple times, and I'm excited about you serving in the community at this position. Done a lot in our city, and Livonia is very fortunate to have someone like you on this board. So I wish you well and have a lot of fun in your new adventure. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you, Tamara, for agreeing to step up and thank Councilmember White for bringing us this nomination. And one of the things that, that we've talked about, you and I talked about it, is it, it's nice to see new faces, right? Who come to us not through explicitly political aspirations or, you know, knowing the same people we all know. We've got, I think many of us have gotten to know you much better and know what you're, you know, appreciate what you do in our community. But it's really nice to have someone who brings a different perspective. I think the, the, your experience in marketing, your interest in the development of the city is great. You're going to find zoning board to be, I think, very interesting and really sets the, it plays a vital role. And as, as we talked when you were asking me about this appointment and what I thought about it, zoning board is, they have the, they have the final say, right? Planning does, planning does very important work, but they're a recommending body, right? That things come to and planning, we look very carefully at what they've said. But zoning board, if people don't like the results they get from zoning board, the next step is the court system. So it plays a, a very important role, right, in maintaining our zoning ordinance and quality of life and businesses. So thank you very much and welcome, and. I'm going to give her, I'm going to give her a chance to speak. I just want my papers back because I was done speaking. So I think we're done, we're done talking. And before we do that, does anyone have any objections in place on consent? That simply means that you, you don't have to come back to the last meeting, but we'd like to, love to hear from you.
Well, Brandon says I have to do a 20-minute speech, but I'm not going to do that. I'll spare you all that, so maybe 20 seconds, but no, thank you very much. I, like you said, I've been, I've known many of you for many, many years and have never had political aspirations and don't still. But I'm actually very excited to continue to work with the city and to make, you know, the city a better place for everybody. So thank you for the opportunity and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Is that 20 seconds?
And we will, Marilyn Mutzy, who is the coordinator and administrator for the zoning board, is on leave right now, but Sarah will, will work with the person kind of filling in for Marilyn on zoning board and make sure that you get everything you need. And we found out that when Scott Morgan got appointed to zoning board, he didn't know that he had an email. He did not know until very recently that he had an email account. We're going to make sure that you get your email account and, and get everything you need to get on board. But thank you and wish you and your family great holidays, and we'll look forward to seeing you and working with you, so.
Thank you. Happy holidays to everybody else, too.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anything else?
Are we at the end? Are we at the end?
We're at the beginning, Laura.
Okay, we're at the beginning. I just want to say, "Go Blue." And for those of you that are supporting Michigan over the weekend, I just want you to yell real loud at your TVs, or if you're out there like Paul Bernier's going to be, you know, don't forget that great alma mater in our great state.
That's my voice on Saturday, moving and hollering at the TV.
Exactly, exactly.
All right. Well, if that's it, then we are adjourned as of 9:17, and this marks my last adjournment of a study meeting. So we'll see you all on December 13th, where we only have one meeting, and it's a regular, so, thanks.
It's a record, Madam Chair.